I'd like to call to order the council meeting for February 11th. If the clerk could please read the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor. Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here.
There are six members present in quorum. Councilmembers Spatafor and Washington are absent.
At this time, if we could rise for meditation and if we could please remember John Dingell and his family in our prayers this evening. Is there anyone else anyone would like at this time? All right, thank you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in its well, with every justice and justice.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of January 14th, not February 4th, but just January 14th.
We have minutes for January 14th. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for approval of the council minutes for January 14th, 2019.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose same sign, passes unanimously.
We are to special ceremonies. We have a tribute and mayoral presentation in recognition of the Michigan Bulletin Newspaper 25th Anniversary.
And if the mayor and councilmember Spitzley, who's representing council, if we can have them down front, and we have Mr. Jefferson, is there others that are here with you for this, if you would have them come forward too at this time?
We'll start, we'll start off with city council and then we'll move to the mayor.
Okay, so start off first, and we have a resolution here resolved by the city council of the city of Lansing, and on a side note, you know, it's, I always pick up a copy of the Michigan Bulletin. Give a copy on the dais for everybody. I want to appreciate your service to the city of Lansing. Great history here, so congratulations. Whereas the Michigan Bulletin officially opened its doors in February 1994 as a minority newspaper, its focuses on issues pertinent to the minority community. The publication has been able to communicate with and educate the greater Lansing area through its dedicated staff. And whereas the Michigan publication is free to the general public and distributed twice monthly via Michigan Bulletin branded red newspaper boxes and through distributors at many of the local churches, every issue contains articles of interest to the minority community, such as health, legal advice, financial advice, calendar listings of events, religious articles, and monthly birthdays and anniversaries, and anniversary celebrations. And I would even say that if this is what you put in this newspaper is not where it is geared towards and it provides a service to the minority community, I think that it does have widespread appeal to the city of Lansing. It's one of those publications, along with many other ones, that really, in my mind, just celebrates the diversity and fills the need here, so I really appreciate that. Whereas the Michigan Bulletin is affiliated with numerous fraternal, religious, and civic organizations, these collaborations lead in their mission toward community outreach. One of the newspaper's most notable accomplishments is working with young people through programs like the Young Publishers Club. This program gives those involved the opportunity to teach students from college to college all aspects of publishing business. This program hopes to inspire young people to major in journalism, start their own publication or seek employment in the field. A former young publisher worthy of praise and recognition is Damon Brown, who has written over 20 books, which include four New York bestsellers. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lansing City Council deems it a privilege to join with the citizens of Lansing, of the citizens of the Lansing area in recognition of the 21st anniversary of the Michigan Bulletin. The milestone in history of institution will be celebrated, offering the entire community an opportunity to acknowledge the publication's longstanding impact on minority issues. May all involved in the success of the Michigan Bulletin know of our admiration. May the newspaper long continue its exemplary course in its mission of communication and education. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll have the mayor.
We have a motion from councilmembers.
Oh, I'm sorry. With that, I moved the resolution.
We have a motion from councilmember Spitzley on that. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you. Mayor Shore.
I'm gonna, Joe Johnson also, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read this out. My crack staff here found it, because I think I left it downstairs. But we also, I also want to congratulate you. I read it, you know, I've read it for years, pick it up wherever I can find it. But I think it's a great, great publication. It's a great chance to kind of read, read things from your perspective, and I appreciate it. So, I said, I'm not gonna read this, it's many of the things that the councilwoman just read, but I get to add now, therefore, I, Andy Shore, mayor of the city of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim February 11th, 2019, as Michigan Bulletin Day in Lansing. I extend my sincere appreciation to the publication's passionate staff for their 25 years of service to our community.
Thank you. Marcus? Would you like to make some comments?
Wow, 25 years, it doesn't seem like that long, but I am glad to have served the community, and I appreciate the advertisers and the city officials that have supported us. Couldn't do it without my staff and writers. Matter of fact, Tajah Lee was one of our first young publishers, and her dad worked alongside me for years, and her brother as well. Would you like to say a few words? Well, we got a person over there taking pictures if we all can get in here.
Yeah, you bet. There we go. You got it?
Great. Thank you. Jim?
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Do you have councilmember comments? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to take this time to thank everybody that attended my second ward constituent contact meeting. Thanks. Adam Hussein, Ward Three representative stopped by, and we had Eric Weber from the City of Lansing Fire Department. And I want to give a quick reminder, the Sycamore Park Neighborhood Association is having their fifth annual spaghetti dinner tomorrow, Tuesday, February 12th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. This meal is free, and all donations support the Disney Kids performance the students will produce in the spring. But just take in mind, if the schools cancel tomorrow, so will this event, so, thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
I'd like to thank the individuals that braved the cold Saturday morning and came out to the Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center for our third ward constituent contact meeting. We had, as always, just a great turnout, tremendous energy in the room. I want to also thank Jason Wilks. He was actually on hand. We had a number of area representatives on hand. Jason Wilks is on the Public Service Board, he's also the facilitator, the new facilitator of rejuvenating South Lansing, so he was there to give updates. Want to thank Scott Dane, who was actually in the audience with us tonight, from Capital Area Soccer League. He was there to give us updates on Beacon Field, or I should say Beacon Southwest Phase Two, which, a number of exciting developments over there. And then also, the newly elected president of the Southwest Action Group, Rachel White, was with us to discuss updates in terms of the town square that we're getting ready to construct at the intersection of Pleasant Grove and Holmes. So just, again, a fantastic slate of speakers, really appreciate those folks coming out. Also have to thank Sylvester Stewart, who actually serviced the entire crowd with Bacon Cakes Donuts. And if you have not been over to Bacon Cakes South at 6030 South MLK, please get over there and support Jeffrey Johnson and the fantastic work he's doing over there. Our next constituent contact meeting is scheduled for March 9th at 5825 Wise Road, 10 to 12 noon, which is the Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center. And then just a couple neighborhood meetings we have coming up. Want to announce that the Churchill Downs Community Association will be meeting Tuesday, so next Tuesday, February 19th, at 6:30 PM. It's at Wainwright School, which is at 4200 Wainwright Avenue, I do believe. The Colonial Village Neighbored Association, the president, I believe, is with us tonight, Chris Klein. How you doing, Chris? They are meeting next Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Grace United Methodist Church, and I believe that's 1900 Boston Boulevard, so right there at the corner of Mount Hope and Boston Boulevard. And then the Lance, I'm sorry, the Luton Rich Neighbored Association is meeting next Thursday, February 21st, at 7:00 PM, and that meeting is at the Mayflower Congregational Church, and that is at 2901 West Mount Hope. So we got a busy week next week with neighbored associations, but we hope to see you guys out at those meetings. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. So I lost my voice. If I sound different, you know, I think I was at the roller derby, the Lansing Dixon's roller derby team, they played at Aim High. I was with my daughter, so we were yelling. I just want to invite you to a few things. First is our monthly constituent contact meeting. It's the fourth Saturday of every month, so that's this February, the 23rd, 10:00 AM at Gregory's, that's 2510 North MLK. Anybody's invited to talk about fourth ward or City of Lansing related matters. I also want to invite anybody interested in working on a climate action plan to come to our Intergovernmental Relations Committee. We hope to get some ideas and start a discussion on what we as a city government or a local municipality can do to try to contribute to the curve of what the scientists are telling us. And, you know, when I talk about this to my wife and other people, I almost feel crazy, but then I just remember that, you know, it's the world's leading scientists that tell us in, you know, 15 to 20 years, things are gonna happen. And that's sooner than probably the time it'll take to fix our roads, probably the time it'll take. No, I'm just saying, really, it's a big, we have problems. So, the consequences are coming just as fast as these other things. So I just want to invite anybody to come Wednesday, 8:30 in the morning, right here at council chambers, and that's on the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind our Lansing residents that we have two great new, great programs available to us. And the first one is the notify me through City of Lansing Public Service. I mean, these past weeks, I've been, my phone's been dinging all hours of the night with telling us, you know, about, you know, where they're assaulting the roads and where accidents are. It's a great tool to keep you informed of what's going on, and so I would encourage our Lansing residents to sign up and receive those text messages. The other one is Lansing Connect, which I'm about to avail myself of as soon as we, as soon as I get home tonight, because my car fell into a pothole on Pleasant Grove and Holmes Road that swallowed me and my son up today. And so, another great tool to notify our City of Lansing workers of potholes and other issues, and so I really would encourage you to sign up and report as often as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments. I just wanted to announce that the parks board is going to be meeting on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:30 at the Foster Community Center, and I believe they're gonna be in room 213. They're going to be looking at the budget and capital improvement information that they are going to be forwarding on to the mayor and to city council. So, this is an opportunity, if there are parks, activities, and projects that you would like to see come forward as part of this list, this is an opportunity for you to meet with the board and give them your ideas. And again, that is on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:30 at the Foster Center. Yes.
Okay, yeah, I do have some announcements. First, I want to welcome a new intern who's just joined us, our office today, Rachel Moore in the back. She'll be helping with council meetings for the next few months, so welcome, Rachel. I also, we received today the official notice of the Lansing School District filing sinking fund special millage election. The election will take place Tuesday, May 7th, so you'll be hearing from me about that. This will be our first election since Proposal Three, the constitutional amendment passed last year, so everybody is eligible to vote by absentee ballot, as well as many other rights, so we'll be doing a lot of communication about that in the coming weeks and months. And then I finally want to mention that as we are trying to get to the end of Phase One of the marijuana license process for the first 20 provisioning centers, we did today come out with a new scoring mechanism for the Phase Two, which will impact the applications that get submitted for, for the last five provisioning centers. So, I'm not positive, did we send that to council members?
No.
Okay.
It's sent to the city dot council and the house.
Okay, so we'll make sure that council members get that, and it's also available at lancinmi.gov/marijuana. A couple of the things that I heard that we need to focus on is, you know, making sure we get the dispersion throughout the city, rather than having the provisioning centers concentrated, both for access as well as for neighborhood concerns. So, we've just rearranged some of the points to try and meet some of the, some of the city, city goals. And I wanted to make sure, even though we are still kind of waiting on when the application period will be, I wanted to make sure that those who may be applying understand what we will be looking at, so that they can target their, their thoughts and investments on that. So, please contact my office if you have questions about that. And with that, we are to community event announcements.
Are there anyone from the community that has an event announcement? If you'd come to the podium and give us your name, you have an opportunity to tell us about your event.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, Judge Ward.
Good evening, counsel. President Wood. Good evening, counsel. I'm Cynthia Ward, 54A District Court Judge, and I'm here to personally invite members of Lansing City Council to my investiture, which is scheduled for Thursday, March 7th, at 4:00 PM, right here in Lansing City Council Chambers. The public is also invited. So thank you very much, Carol Wood, for making the chambers available to me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other community events? All right, then seeing none, we are to the speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, and that's the blue sign-in sheet. That would include the two scheduled public hearings, as well as the items listed on the consent agenda, resolutions for action, ordinances for introduction, and ordinances for passage. If you want to speak, you do need to sign in, and that'll be collected in about the next 15 or 20 seconds, if you don't jump up and make yourself known to Rachel. And we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you. So first, let me thank everybody for being there or watching the state of the city. I think there were about 280 people at Riverwalk Theater, thank you to Riverwalk Theater. And then if you believe what everyone told me, another 100 to 200 people watched it online somewhere. So excellent job by our Lansing public media for getting that online. But in case you missed it, speech is online on our city website, as is the whole event. You can watch all of it. Seemed like people enjoyed it. We were a little non-traditional, I'd say, we had some hip-hop, we had a little bit of spoken word, and then I got to give a speech. My council partners are already reminding me about the Mister Rogers music, as I changed my shirts. But I thought it went really well. We highlighted our economic development over the last year, which took some significant time, which is always great all around the city. We highlighted our arts and culture that's going on. We highlighted two new boards that we're gonna be creating, a faith-based board and a veterans board. We highlighted our neighborhoods, we talked about our roads plan, and then we announced our new visioning and branding campaign moving forward. So, if you didn't see it, or if you have questions, I already have people asking me why we're getting rid of the city seal, and as I said in the speech, we're not getting rid of the city seal, we're just creating a brand. All of that probably can be answered in the speech, or you're welcome to contact my office, but again, look forward to working with everybody here on council as we implement this new vision, and we're excited to move forward. Outside of that, this Thursday, or Thursday, February 14th, which, yes, this Thursday, so Valentine's Day, we have our Baker Neighborhood Partner Update at 1:00 PM, so you can join the Baker Neighbors, the City of Lansing, and many partner organizations working together at the Bethlehem Lutheran Church to celebrate the accomplishments of 2018, and see what we can do moving forward in 2019. On Saturday, we have our February Mobile Food Pantry at the Penway Church of God. We'll have free, fresh, and non-perishable food items. Participants have to bring a valid state ID or driver's license and bring a box or bag to carry food. On Wednesday, February 20th, at, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Cristo Rey Community Center, is round two of our participatory budget nights. So we'll have a discussion about Lansing's investments in economic development programs, from basic support to household financial development, all the way through large-scale projects. And then Thursday, February 21st through Saturday, February 23rd, this is what we talked about, MSU will be holding a Designing Safe Neighborhoods project, and we'll have resident stakeholders, experts, and decision-makers together over three days to learn about and co-create crime prevention and placemaking strategies for the Pleasant View neighborhood. MSU has offered the city staff, and then MSU Extension and a few others, to be part of this event. So, it should be a fascinating event. And then there'll be a final meeting on Saturday where they'll present kind of the findings and ideas. So, things that I'm excited about, I did, I saw Rachel is here, I don't see her in the audience. Oh, from Swag.
No.
Oh, hey, I got my shirt, so thank you for that. I got my Swag shirt for contributing to the awesome campaign. They gave it to me at the showcase. Anybody who missed the Lansing School Showcase yesterday, that also was an awesome event. So, things that are going on in Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, that includes the consent agenda, ordinances for introduction and passage, resolutions for action, and the following two public hearings that I'll read into the record. Number one, in consideration of Act Four, 2019, sale of city property, Townsend Parking Ramp located at 221 Townsend Street to the Michigan Senate. And number two, in consideration of fire code amendment adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code, Chapter 39.
And before we ask for explanations on them, I do want the public to know that we are pulling from the Committee of the Whole, Section Seven, Number G, and this is the appointment of Mr. Mendoza to the Board of Review. You are not, according to the charter, with the Board of Review, shall not be able to hold an office if you are a public employee in any of the local taxing governmental, supported by Lansing, property taxes. So, Mr. Mendoza indicated he worked part-time for the city, so that will have to be pulled. So we'll work with the mayor to get another appointment on that. That doesn't, because it's in the agenda, you still are able to speak on it. So with that, I would first turn to councilmember Spitzley on the consideration of the sale of property.
Thank you, Madam President. So tonight, we're gonna have a public hearing regarding the sale of the Townsend Parking Ramp located at 221 Townsend Street to the Michigan Senate. Now, you're also gonna, we're also gonna have action on a couple other things today as it relates to Tifa, and as it relates to actually transferring the deed, but the actual sale of the property is the public hearing tonight, and so we're receiving public comment on it, and we won't act on it until the next hearing. The lot is specifically, or the property is specifically described as Lot 7, 8, 9, and 10, also part of Lot 11, described as beginning at a point on east line of Lot 11, at a distance of 104.04 feet, southerly from the northwest corner lot, I know this is a lot, but I think you should probably say a Lot 12, then southerly along the east line of Lot 11, to the southeast corner of Lot 11, then westerly along the south line of Lot 11 to the southwest corner of Lot 11, then northerly, I love that word, then, who puts, who puts then in a word anymore? That's good. Then northerly along the west line of Lot 11 to a point on the west line of Lot 11, a distance of 104.33 feet, southerly from the northwest corner of Lot 12, then easterly to the point of beginning of Block 116 of the original plat of the city of Lansing, according to the recorded plat as thereof recorded in Library Two of Platts, page 36, Inglewood County Records.
Along with that, the sale of this property would be for $18 million.
$18 million, that's correct. So, I, the sale of the property is for a total of $18 million. We have an outstanding bond requirement of $13 million, and so that would leave us with $5 million surplus that, hearing the mayor speak last week, or the week before, would go to the parking fund, or I think there was discussion that it might go somewhere else as well. So, we just wanted to make that, that clear, and so there'd be an additional $5 million left.
Okay, and, and once our bonds are paid off, those additional revenues can be used throughout any place in the city. Correct, okay. All right, that takes us to councilmember Hussein.
So, the second public hearing is in consideration of fire code amendment adoption of the 2018 International Fire Code, Chapter 39. We had our fire marshal, Marshawn Blake, in the public safety dating, it was sometime in December, as a matter of fact, and then we also had Marshawn Blake before Committee of the Whole last Monday. And he explained to us that right now, we are operating under the 2009 International Fire Code. The city attorney's office is reviewing the balance of the 2018 International Fire Code, and my understanding is, the city attorney's office will be bringing that to council for consideration, review on potential adoption in the future. But there is an immediate need when it comes to Chapter 39 of the IFC 2018 in terms of adoption. Chapter 39 deals with, thank you, deals with processing and extraction facilities. We do have a new industry here in the city of Lansing, and so what this would do when vetting medical marijuana processing centers is give the fire marshal's division a set of standards essentially to, to assess applicants and to inspect facilities and things of that nature. So, before we move on to the public hearing, we just want to thank the fire marshal for coming in December, being patient with us as we asked our questions, and as always, we want to thank the city's attorney's office for doing just a fantastic job as our guide on the side. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and just one more, well, two more clarifications. One is, again, this is just for the sale, we are not making any appropriations of any funds when we're talking in regards to the Townsend Ramp. This is just approving a sale. Second of all, we have a communication from Elaine Wahlbart, who is supportive of the agenda item on the sale of the Miller Center to the Capital Area Soccer League, and I'd like that record, that email put into the record as part of public comment. With that, we will now take the public comment.
Okay, our first speaker is Kathy Miles, and then we have Marshall Chabot.
Regarding the sale of the Miller Road Center, I'm sorry to see the negative publicity associated with this sale. Residents voted to sell the Miller Road Center. The soccer league participated in a blind bid process and has been over backwards to accommodate the theater. The Capital Area Soccer League will be offering certification training for referees at their new home. There's a potential for winter indoor soccer and weight training there. The auditorium at the Southside Community Center has a large stage and abundant parking. The city already leases that building and could offer a good rate to the theater company for a stage that no one's using now. We need to update the Lansing Fire Code immediately to ensure that inspections of the processing facilities being located in high-density residential neighborhoods throughout our city are held to the strictest safety standards. These facilities use dangerous, highly flammable chemicals. The weather, excuse me, wet weather control program will improve discharge of sewage into the river near Moore's River. This drain handles 60% This drain handles 60% of the sewage for the community. The international, it's time we focus more on our aging housing stock, and the international maintenance code will up, should benefit code in that effort. I'm for the fee increase for the Todd Barton Tennis Program. It helps our youth with fitness, and thank you, Todd, for giving back to the community. NeoGen has a building on LeShur Place that is used to house visiting scientists when they come to town. The addition of several offices within the residence, I believe, has been approved by zoning as complying with the master plan and should be approved. NeoGen does a lot for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Marshall Claboe, followed by June B.
All right. Hello, Representative Jackson, let's go. I appreciate the comment today. Was not expecting that, kinda set a different mood. My name is Marshall Claboe. I'm a fourth ward Lansing resident. Here to spend my three minutes of time really urging the city to take climate as the crisis that it is. I'm here speaking on behalf, urging this body of leadership, this elected leadership, to act on the easement to Consumers Energy east of Canal Road along the west side of Lansing, Board of Water and Light Property, and Delta Township. What's going on? We know there's a $500 million investment going into the natural gas plant. Part of the reason I'm here is in opposition to George Stojic's opinion piece in Lansing State Journal headlined, "BWO Is Helping to Clean Up the Region's Energy." That's not true. For those that don't know George Stojic, George Stojic is the Executive Director of Planning and Development of the Lansing Board of Water and Light. These positions are appointed by our council and mayor. The $500 investment, million-dollar investment going on is gonna sit idle once we have a Democratic president elected in 2020. Green New Deal is not going away. That would, it would demand a moratorium on any fossil fuel investments. This is sneaking in, one. Two, I'm here really to speak out on behalf of the peaker plants that are invested in this $500 million. What these are, are $180 million of public funds going to outdated technology. There's people across the country that are using storage technologies of solar and batteries to replace peaker plants in states across the country. Every state is banning peaker plants. We're about to build two new ones worth $180 million. That could all go towards renewable energy, could go to energy efficiency, improving our housing stock. 43% of emissions come from housing stock, from buildings. We need to lead. Michigan is a leader. We're, have a fifth of the world's water in our hands. We need to lead. It's time for this leadership to lead. And that stands tonight, delaying this easement to Consumers Energy, three acres for $1. This is working to build a longer natural gas pipeline, from my understanding of the legislation being passed tonight. Additionally, I have two op-eds here, one that was submitted to City Pulse, one that was submitted to Lansing State Journal. I do suspect the City Pulse one gaining some steam, but regardless, they're here in opposition to Stojic's letter that was published in LSJ. Would appreciate if everyone got a copy, read them. I don't wanna make copies, but you can pass them around, talk about them. Wednesday, 8:30, I'll definitely be there. Appreciate you letting us know. We've had climate panel talks. Not many have actually came about. Appreciate Kathy's efforts, for sure. $41,000 going to Coal Stack Logo. It's kind of shoved to the face, to this whole project. The $500 million is really, it's an interesting time to be a Lansing resident. I'm proud to be a Lansing resident. I would like to continue to be a proud Lansing resident. But we have a big decision. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Shall I leave these up here?
Yes, Brian, the other Brian Jackson will grab them from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have June B. and then Chris Roloffs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here for the appeal of, from my auntie. I was here last week. We talked about it, and we were told to be back today. It was about the charge that happened on, last, it was on December 11, 2018. And she was charged with $518 for the, for the furniture in front of her house. So she would like to know where she'd go on from that, like, you know, does she pay? Or, she would like to know what's the next thing.
Sir, we'll be voting on that, and then after council votes on it, then, as we explained in committee, if the council amends or approves or denies the claim, then she will be able to make some arrangements with the treasurer's office if there's a fee that she will have to make, and she can make payment plans on that.
So, so do we wait for the, for the devote?
We'll be voting shortly this evening. What would happen, if you'd like to stay, you can. If not, what will happen is you'll receive a letter explaining to you what our actions were and what the final determination was.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Chris Roloffs.
The council will be examining whether, or looking at whether or not to allow liquor license transfer for a restaurant I own in Lansing this evening. I'm here just as an interested party, and in case any questions arose, I won't take any more of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. So we are to the referral of the public hearings. Number one, in consideration of Act 4, 2019.
And that will go back to Committee of the Whole.
And number two, in consideration of the fire code amendment.
That will be voted on tonight because of the timeliness of this matter.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the following items. B1A, a tribute in recognition of the Lansing Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's annual red and white affair. B1C, a tribute in recognition of the Ninth Annual Pastor's Salute. B2A, confirmation of appointment, Brian McGrane as a member of the Local Development Finance Authority for a term to expire June 30th, 2019. B6A, which is a confirmation of reappointment of Michael D. Martalary as the at-large member of the Income Tax Board of Review for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. B7A, confirmation of reappointment, Anita Turner as the third ward member of the Medical Marijuana Commission for a term to expire on November 27th, 2021. And B7C, confirmation of reappointments, Cassie Alley to the Elected Officers Compensation Committee, and Christine M. Zarkovich to the Downtown Lansing, Inc. Board. All others will be removed from the consent agenda.
We have a motion. It's seen, no questions. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
And we are to resolutions for action by the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so the first appointment we have is for Mr. Robert, is Mr. Robert Gibb with us?
Yes, he is.
All right, fantastic. We had Robert Gibb in to development and planning this past Monday. This is for an appointment to the Historic District Commission. This particular commission consists of nine members, all at large. And the vacancy that exists right now is actually for a licensed architect. So in any event, Mr. Gibb did come before development and planning last week. He is a second ward resident, lives, has lived in Lansing Sari since 2017, is a licensed architect. He has a bachelor's and master's degree in architecture. Professionally, he specializes in adaptive reuse, residential, commercial, and industrial construction. And when asked why he would like to serve on this, he said that he would like to protect and preserve the character of the city's historic districts. It was a fantastic interview, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Gibb's willingness. And so with that being said, I would move the appointment.
I have a motion on the appointment. Are there any questions or concerns? Seen none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign, passes unanimously. Sir, if you would come forward, come through the, into the well, the clerk will swear you in at this time. Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
All right. The second appointment we have tonight is for Robert Fryling, who is with us tonight, as an at-large member of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire June 30th, 2021. Again, this is a nine-member body. There are eight at-large representatives. There is one planning board representative. And this particular body is charged with considering requests from, or requests for variances from our zoning code. Again, we did have Mr. Robert Fryling into development and planning. He spoke a little bit about his professional experience. He is currently an IT specialist with Sparrow. He does have prior employment, experience with his family's construction business. He is a graduate of Elma College, 2011, with a computer science degree. And the discussion centered on really just his desire to get involved, to strengthen, advance our community. And again, we certainly appreciate his willingness to serve. So with that being said, I would move the appointment of Robert Fryling.
I have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seen none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign, passes unanimously. Sir, if you would please come forward into the well, the city clerk will swear you in at this time. Yep.
I do solemnly swear. I will support the Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the State of Michigan. I will faithfully discharge the duties. As a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. According to the best of my abilities.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right, so the next item from development and planning, we are looking to set a public hearing. The public hearing would be February 25th. And this is in consideration of Lansing Economic Development, no, I'm sorry. This is in consideration of Brownfield Plan Number 62, Amendment Number 1, George F. Ied Family LLC, Oliver Towers Redevelopment Project. I do believe we have a team here tonight that is going to present. So as you guys come on down and join us down here, I'll just give a quick overview. What we have was in 2000, well, in 2000, there was a pretty significant fire at Oliver Towers, which is at 310 North Seymour. That property was owned and operated by the Lansing Housing Commission at that time. It was a eight-story senior apartment complex. And in the event, the fire did some pretty significant damage to the first floor. And so there was damage to the electrical system, to the fire suppression system. And so that building was essentially, it was, it was decided that it would not be renovated and reactivated essentially as living space for seniors. So in any event, 2015, the Lansing Housing Commission partnered with the City of Lansing to actually sell it to, again, the George F. Ied Family LLC. At that time, there was a subsequent rezone of that property by the city council in 2015 to allow for mixed-use commercial and multifamily. There was a Brownfield Plan that was actually approved by this body. And what it was, it was presented to the development and planning that there was some need for some amendments to that Brownfield Plan due to some changes in deadlines, some changes in investment, tax capture, but most notably, the actual deadline for the Brownfield eligible activities to be completed. The original date, I believe, was December of 2018. So the team is going to present, not only on the need for the amendment, but what the project is going to look like moving forward. So we'll go ahead and start with Carl.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussein. That was a great job of, of an overview. There's not much more I can add to that, but I'd like to introduce Mark Klaus, who's representing the Ied Company, who owns the property, is the developer. And then Dave Van Heren, who's with Tritera Environmental. He's providing assistance with the Brownfield Plan. So I'll turn it over to Mark first.
And I do believe City TV has this PowerPoint, so that that will be going along with you. Go ahead. Okay. Is your mic on? Is the green light on?
Enough not to have a problem.
Okay.
There we go.
Yeah, all right.
I apologize. If you, I won't go back all the way through it.
Okay.
I apologize for not making sure my light is on.
I'm sorry, I didn't remind you. Thank you.
At any rate, the, the building has started the progress of the asbestos removal and mold removal in the building. As, if you drove through tonight coming to the, to the meeting, I was, I came down Ionia, a different route than I normally take, and it was very nice. And I'm sure all of you have appreciated the fact, there's lights on in the building. And probably for the first time, obviously, for over a decade on the upper stories. The windows have all been removed, and so what you're seeing the light come through is visqueen over the windows and protecting from the elements inside the building. But the work has begun. The, the reason for the requested amendment to this plan is a couple of the issues. One is that we have, we are moving forward with it, and the, the knowledge of what needs to be done is better than it was two, or two years ago when the plan was first adopted. Secondly, some of the work cannot be done, or could not be done, before the end of 2018. And our request is to extend that through the year 2019. The work will still be completed. The entire project will be completed during this calendar year. Our plan is to have it in place at the end of November, early December of 2019. It is 96 units. There'll be about 4,500 square feet of retail on the first floor. It will be something that I think the city and our company will both be very proud of. I think David has probably a little more of the detail as far as the Brownfield, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have on the project itself. Thank you.
Good evening. Dave Van Heren with Tritera. We did provide a presentation that outlines the amendment to the Brownfield Plan. I understand each of you have a copy of this presentation. The pages are numbered. The first couple of pages gives the background, which we've already discussed. There was the original Brownfield Plan, Number 62, that was adopted in 2015. This is an amendment of that plan. So the first couple of pages give a summary of the property itself. It's both contaminated and has been deemed to be functionally obsolete. And it is a mixed-use development that has 96 units. That's residential units and 4,400 square feet of commercial space. If you go to Slide 6 of the presentation, that outlines the difference between the original Brownfield Plan and then this amendment. And then the third column just summarizes that, what that difference is. The original plan did include construction of extended space beyond the footprint for commercial, additional commercial retail space that was determined to be infeasible economically. So that's the only thing that's really been removed from the project. However, the total investment has been increased by $6.7 million, from $8 million to $14.7 million. When we looked at the project in September and October, when we realized we were gonna have to do an amendment of the Brownfield Plan to allow for completion of about $400,000 worth of asbestos abatement, demolition work, and infrastructure improvements that had yet to be completed, we went and itemized all the activities that had been completed to date versus what has to be completed by the end of the project. So the overall eligible activities that are projected has actually decreased by $782,000. And the term of the plan has been reduced from 19 years to 12 years. And if you recall, there's a seven-year And if you recall, there's a seven-year OPA on the project. We're already a couple of years into the project, so that certainly affected the duration of the Brownfield Plan, because the OPA is going to expire earlier, which allows for reimbursement quicker. And then again, the impetus for the plan was to extend the timeline to complete activities to the end of 2019. The next few slides outlines the taxes that are going to be generated and then captured as a result of the plan. So it's about $1.8 million in new taxes are going to be generated through this project, $1.3 million, almost $1.4 millions in reimbursement for eligible activities, and then about $100,000 for administration of the plan by the Brownfield Authority, and then deposits into the local Brownfield Fund. The next slide on Page 8 outlines those specific activities, which again includes the environmental investigation, asbestos surveys that were conducted. A bulk of the cost is in demolition and asbestos abatement activities, and then at the end of the project, some public improvements to the property. The next slide on Page 9 outlines the, of the new taxes generated. That is about $415,000 over the duration of the plan, and that will go towards the state education tax, city debt, and then there is the 10% pass-through that'll go to the TIFA. And lastly, again, it's a, it's an amendment of a Brownfield Tax Increment Financing Plan, and we're looking for approval of the plan, which is estimated to be 12-year duration.
If I may, I think it's a couple items that are important. One is the investment by our company and by the private individuals have increased significantly. There is a reduction in the eligible activities. The plan period is shortened, and the recapture amount is reduced. So I, we view it, and I'm hoping that you do as well, that it's all a positive. The only thing that we're really asking for is to allow us to have a little more time to complete those eligible activities, because they were not able to be completed in 2018, and then to reduce the overall plan dollar amount. So we appreciate your consideration.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I just, I just got on development and planning, and I like what's going on at that property. I just have to ask, have you reached out to the local building trades?
The, yes, we have. The contract for the work has already been executed for the entire project. The general contractor is wheeling out of Lansing area here, and they have gone through a process, and I'll be submitting that as part of our development agreement response, going through all the companies that were reached, or were actually asked to bid, and then the list of the contractors that they're working with. So that work has already been done, and they were very much aware of the requirements that we had and our concerns about making sure that we had as many local people both available to work on the project and to be a part of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the Development Planning Committee making sure that we get that list, realizing that this is a, a project that is already in the works. It's a little bit different than one that is coming to us the first time, so. And I know that your corporation has worked hard with, to try to do some local investments, so having that list is important for us, and how many local workers we've got.
We fully appreciate that, and we'll continue to do so.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, then Councilmember Hussein, do we have a motion?
Sure. And so the motion, again, would be to set a public hearing for February 25th. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion to set the public hearing. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. This hearing will be for February 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussein.
All right. So the next, we are also looking to set a public hearing in consideration of Lansing Economic Development Corporation, Riotown Project, for the Pablo's Mexican Restaurant, 1102 Southwest Washington Avenue and West Elm Street. We also have a team here. I believe that includes Tom Donaldson, Mr. Maldonado, Chris Klein, as well as Carl Dorsheimer from the, from Lansing Economic Area Partnership. Okay, fantastic. All right. We appreciate each of you being here. In any event, we did have this exact same team in front of development and planning this past Monday. Mr. Maldonado, so Southsiders are very excited about this. This is going to make the fantastic food of Pablo's Mexican Restaurant just a little bit more accessible for us. Mr. Maldonado shared with us that he did move into the city about 18 years ago. Opened up the Pablo's Mexican Restaurant in Old Town in 2005, and what he's looking to do is to expand into Riotown. In order to do that, he would like, he is applying, sorry, for a business financing assistant loan from the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, and this is, this is driven by state statute, but one of the things that he must do is have a project plan approved by both the Lansing Economic Development Corporation's Board of Directors, as well as the city council. So in part of that process, we have to have a public hearing before our body, before we can actually vote on that issue. So we'll start with Chris Klein and share anything that we need to know before actually establishing the public hearing.
Mr. Klein, and you know, to make sure that your green light's on. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Hussein, for that overview. So yes, this would be expanding into a second location for Pablo's Mexican Restaurant into Riotown, as was described. This is to consider the project plan, which gets us further along in the process for the loan before the EDC Board to help assist with that, establishing that project. Just a few highlights. The project itself is over $460,000 investment. Approximately 12 jobs will be created, and a big point, and I don't want to take too much away from Pablo, a big point of this would also be the, the expansion of this restaurant allows them to expand the size and service of the restaurant to seat 120 people. This would be a huge gain for Riotown, which has been experiencing a lot of economic growth lately, but, you know, more restaurants and that are still needed, so it'd be a huge win for that area. And I'd like to just pass along to Mr. Pablo Maldonado, owner of Pablo's Mexican Restaurant, and then also Tom Donaldson, to add what they might want to.
Sir.
Yes, well, Pablo and I have been working together on this for over a year, and Pablo has, he's invested a significant amount of his own money in supply equity in this building.
Is your green light on? I see them coming out. All right, thank you.
Oh, there we go. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
There's, there's been a significant investment by Mr. Maldonado into the business already. This will be his second location, so he's a, he's a successful restaurant operator in town. But this is, as Chris Klein mentioned, this is a significant investment, nearly a half million dollars, and it's, it's a bit of a push. So that's really, we've worked together to work through the numbers and feeling very confident about this, and with the city's help, he's going to make this, this come to Riotown. And I think, I don't know if the, you sent some renderings over. I don't know if the photos are up there for you, but it's, it's going to be a beautiful addition to the, the community with a, with a beautiful patio out front that I think is really going to kind of create sort of an area for the public to gather and, and really enjoy Riotown and be, stay there in the, in the evenings. It'll be open for lunch and dinner. It's going to be a great addition to the neighborhood, I feel.
Well, after that, my friends have said already, I just like to say thanks to everyone, and finally get to meet you all. I heard so many good things about everybody here. Like everybody says, I moved from New York 18 years ago, and we opened up in 2005 in Old Town location, and finally, part of my dream is become a neighborhood, neighbor on the, on the Riotown neighborhood. And, well, I believe when we open up doors, it will be very good for a lot, a lot of friends, a lot of friends, not only for, for me, for my family, it will be, Chris mentioned that we have 12 jobs opening, sorry, we have 25 opening shops for the new location. We have 12 already on Old Town location, and it's a big, big thing to do. Hopefully, I can, will you help? Well, we do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions by council? Councilmember Hussein.
Mr. Maldonado, could you just talk a little bit? It, it did kind of excite the development and planning committee, but just a little bit about the plans for the actual patio, some of the things that you guys are looking to do.
I'm excited myself, too. You know, the patio, if you can see the picture over there, is 27-foot long by 12, with the ceiling, clear, clear ceiling to cover up the sun, but those, those cover, those cover the lights, covers, covers the rain, whatever. And one corner of the patio will be somebody doing actual, you know, tortillas. It's corn shell tortillas, and, and the other side of the patio will be someone or, or a group of, team of singers playing music. I don't know if it's once a week, or we see, we go from there. Very, very, very interesting location.
Any other questions? My question to Mr. Klein, is this the only incentive, the loan through LEDC, or are there potential of other incentives that might be coming forward?
Yes. So in the past, I believe this site received some EPA assessment funds, but the loan would be the only program that we're looking to utilize for the current project.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right. Well, very enthusiastically, I would move the resolution to set a public hearing for February 25th.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. And this will be for the council for a public hearing on the 25th. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry about that. This is, okay, so before us is Act 9, 2018. This is an easement to Consumers Energy east of Canal Road along the west side of the Lansing Board of Water and Light Property in Delta Township. So if you think about this property, you think of the Erickson Power Plant property. I believe we have Mr. Mattis with us today. Yes, we do. If you could come on down. He promised to be with us. We appreciate you being here. In any event, this easement would allow for consumers to construct and operate a new gas pipeline on the property occupied and maintained by Lansing Board of Water Light in Delta Township. As folks know, the Erickson Power Plant is planned to be decommissioned by 2025, and essentially, this easement would allow for that gas pipeline to supply the new power plant with natural gas. So with that being said, we have invited Mark Mattis here to just give us an overview of the act, and then we will move forward with council consideration and review. Thanks.
Sir, if you could make sure the green light is on.
It's on.
All right. You're good to go.
So that was a very accurate description of this easement. This is relatively straightforward piece of real estate along Canal Road to allow about a 50-foot strip for consumers to build a distribution line into the site so that the gas, the new gas plant, we're going to call it the Delta Energy Park, that's the name as, as of right now, can replace, be built and replace Erickson Station, a coal plant.
Are there any questions by council members? Seeing none, we have a motion before us for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Was that a yes? Opposed, okay. It passes with one no vote. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We are to the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. Here we have a request for a transfer of a liquor license. The requester owns a business in Okemos, near the Meridian Mall, Tanning LLC. They have a higher-end restaurant where they also sell liquor, but it's not their primary source of income. They are looking to relocate their establishment from the Okemos area to Michigan Avenue, where the old Tobuli was on Michigan Avenue, near Resurrection School, and the new establishment will be a restaurant, but it will be a middle-end Italian eatery that has a great selection of wine. And again, I'm sorry about my voice, guys. They have a great selection of wine, that's what they're known for there, and they're not asking to change any classification, but just the transfer of the license from one location to another. This passed out of committee, 3-0, and some of the questions that came up was what type of even, what does the evening look like? What are your hours? And basically, they are open for business to the early evening and don't have plans to have like a late-night scene. So with that, I would move the resolution to approve the liquor license transfer.
We have a motion before us to approve the licenses, then would also have to be approved by the other municipality for this transfer to be completed. They've already approved it? Pardon me? Oh, well, that wasn't what the attorney was with this said. Okay. All right. Okay. All those, all right, we'll have to go back. Thank you. All those in favor of the liquor license, approval of liquor license, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Before we move forward, it's been brought to our attention that the Act 9, 2018 requires a six-vote vote. We have a five-to-one, and two council members that are not with us. We have the option to reconsider at this point and look and determine whether there's a change in vote, or this can be held over until the 25th meeting to see if we have one of our other council members that are not here this evening to make an affirmative vote. Is there a motion? Is there any idea of reconsideration?
I'll move for reconsideration.
All right. We have a motion for reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Now on the reconsideration, this is the approval of the easement for Consumers Energy. All those in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I just wanted to put a discussion out there, that there's a point for a discussion.
All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I didn't understand that this has a six-vote requirement. I know that if it's reconsidered later, that it's going to pass, and I would likely be the only one opposed, but I just would still want to put it on the record that last year, when I became a member of council, we had the meetings with Board Water and Light and the plans, and I heard from the groups, and I do believe that there is emerging technology that is going to be better than natural gas. And you heard the gentleman speak to it a little bit, so that would be my basis for objecting, because really, you know, I don't want to see us go down a path that isn't in the best interest, given what I believe to be true and what frankly, a lot of others believe to be true. But given that, again, I do believe that it'll still pass when the remainder of the colleagues come here, I will reconsider my vote and vote yes.
So, Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. For very many of the same reasons, this is, I, I agree with you, but this is an easement that isn't going to be acted on yet, and we still have time to look into other possibilities. So I'm, I completely get where you're coming from, and you're right, it would pass anyway. But, but it doesn't mean that it's a done deal. So, there you go.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I understand your angst, and I respect that. I think that, you know, your, your Committee on Intergovernment in talking about climate change and those climate change issues are exactly where it needs to be, and I applaud that as well. So I, I just wanted to give you a vote of support. I appreciate, you know, your, your vote. I appreciate you changing your vote, and look forward to hearing your report out of your, your Intergovernment Committee.
Okay. With those comments, and just to clarify, the action that we are taking is a permanent action to allow for the easement. What happens after that, you know, working through with Board of Water and Light and consumers, and them doing whatever. consumers, and them doing whatever they do, they have that right to move forward. So just, I understand councilmember Dunbar's comment that there is opportunity maybe for future technology that might come into play before they do that, but what we're doing is giving them this easement today and now if this vote goes through. Okay, having said that, let's go back again, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to, back to General Services. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. In the General Service Committee, we had a claim for, an appeal claim, of a lady who owns a house on Hillsdale. She put out her indoor furniture chair on the curb, and then it was tagged because it's too big to go into the garbage or recycling, and it's not what you're supposed to do. So she took it and moved it up to her garage at the top of her driveway, still in the front, where everybody could see it. And it is against the rules to have outdoor furniture, indoor furniture, outdoor. So when the, our code came back around and noticed that it was still in front, although it was moved, it wasn't moved the other way, they called Eric's Refuge, who came in and took the single chair away, and her bill was, with administrative fees, five hundred and eighteen dollars. She appealed. She was here earlier, a lady, she doesn't speak English. She had one of her family members that lives outside of the house translate for her at the hearing. And basically, she said she didn't know, she thought that when she moved it away from the curb, it was okay, and that she wanted to use it possibly to sit on. The committee asked questions like, well, if you put it on the curb, isn't that indication you wanted to throw it away? She said she thought that she was okay pulling it back. We decided to, and it doesn't reflect on the agenda, but there was an adjustment from the five eighteen, if I recall. It was minus seventy-eight dollars.
Correct.
That's the cost of how much a non-compactable object is extra, because you can't compress a sofa chair. So we took that off, and my math says that's four hundred and forty dollars.
Correct.
This passed two to one for a lot of good reasons. One reason was that it was a violation, and the city taxpayers would be the one having to foot the bill should, you know, there be some reduction. Another reason was that the lady basically didn't speak any English, and that she was ignorant to the fact that she had to move it all the way out of sight, or in the garage, or back inside, or get the proper disposal. And another opinion was like, it's a close call, let's bring it to the full board. So with that, I would move the resolution to deny the appeal in part and grant the ruling of the hearing in the amount of four hundred and forty dollars.
It would be deny the claim of four hundred and forty dollars?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So for procedural purposes, so if we vote no, what happens? I've always been confused on these. So if we vote, if we vote no, what happens? I mean, does she, does she still have to pay the five? I'm trying to figure out, if we, if it vote no, and it doesn't pass, does she have to pay the five eighteen?
The city still has the claim. It hasn't been settled, so it still has the claim of five hundred and eighteen dollars.
So she's appealed it, and I apologize.
And this reduces it to four forty.
Right, so she's appealed it, it went to General Services, they, their recommendation is to deny in part, grant in part.
Right. The resolution reduces the claim that says she owes four hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. Do you understand where I'm trying to? I want to, I don't, so I'm trying to figure out, if I vote no, I want to vote where she doesn't have to pay anything. So how do I do that?
You would have to make an amendment to this to grant the claim of the entire amount, and you'd have to have five votes to sustain that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. Okay, so this is my, this is where we're confused. If she doesn't make a motion and doesn't need five affirmative votes, all we need are enough votes to kill it in its present form, and it's the same effect, correct?
She should pay five hundred and eighteen dollars.
She still has a bill.
Yeah.
She would still be responsible, it's still on her taxes, and nothing will have come off.
That's what we're seeing.
A claim appeal, and it has already been denied by the Claims Review Committee, which is an administrative board, has denied that. And so where it would be is it's still on her tax record.
Do what you got to do.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend to approve her appeal in the amount of five hundred and eighteen dollars.
Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Jackson.
I'll support that, and I was the person in committee who voted to approve her appeal. And I admit that it was on an emotional basis. But again, I was, you know, I do believe that she really thought she could pull her chair up without, you know, being able to speak English and getting the translator and coming to the thing and being here today. And that's what, you know, we get to make our decisions, so I will support that.
All right, we have a motion out there. I understand the concern that we have here, and part of my support and why I actually made the amendment to reduce it by the seventy-eight dollars was to give some leniency on this. As the code inspector explained to us, when they go through, they're looking at a property address, not who's living in the property. The fact that there was a violation there, they received a letter for the violation, and that the woman had a nurse that had come to see her, explained to her that she had to move the chair, but she didn't call, tell her that she could call the number. Or if she told her she could call the number, she didn't call the number. And so then, the city went out there. We, as a council, every year, look at what it costs us to do business. We had code compliance in front of us just a few minutes ago, asking about hiring our code officers and that. The administrative fee that is charged to this, the two hundred and sixty-five dollars, pays for those code officers to be there. There was a bid process that went out, and the minimum charge to have that, that chair taken away was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that's where we ended up with the cost that we had on this. The other issue that we constantly hear from code compliance as we look at these, or we are not in the garbage business, some of the concerns that were brought up by councilmember Jackson, I had met with Judy Harris of Refugee Services, and there are certain information that they do give out to refugees about grass and trash and things like that. We agreed that we would work on a brochure that they could pass out that would include the indoor/outdoor furniture as part of that. But we have people that come into our city that might have lived in the country, that are not refugees, that have lived in other municipalities and have done the same thing. Or we have had people that have had sofas or chairs that have been dumped in their front yards, and they were cited and said, well, it wasn't mine, so I was going to take care of it. And we've still said, I'm sorry, but this is the rule. So for me, when we're looking at setting a precedent, then we have to go back and look at all of those that we have denied, and have them say, well, if I had, if I had said that I couldn't speak English, would you have then given me that break? So as much as my heart understands what's there, I'm not going to be supporting this. I see councilmember Hussein and councilmember Jackson, and councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that explanation. This is a tough one. Last year, I served on General Services for the first time, and each time we met, there were just heart-wrenching stories, to be quite frank. And the way this, you know, if it's under twenty-five hundred dollars, the Claims Review Committee actually takes a look at this. And so the General Services and City Council essentially has an appellate function. And so what we, you know, and again, what we are not trying to do is obviously set precedent, but I believe our job is to truly determine whether or not our code or policy have been followed with fidelity. And so when we look at checking those boxes, so we look at, have they been noticed correctly? Have the individuals that have, are supposed to be noticed, have, were they noticed? We look at whether or not our code officers actually put eyes on the property, and then did they, did they check essentially the box when we talk about recheck policy? And then when it goes out for contract, did our contractors essentially follow policy? And kind of the way we contract with them, the provisions of our contract, did they follow that with fidelity? And so when we looked at these last year, and I'm going to continue to do that this year, it's a checking of the boxes. And again, we're not in the business of setting precedents. This is a kind of an appellate function, and there have been a number of similar situations as this that we also denied, because the city does incur a cost. And if we do grant these, the taxpayers are on the hook. So in any event, I just wanted to explain the reason why I will not be supporting essentially granting this, whatever your motion will be. I'm not even going to try to articulate it, but in any event, I certainly don't want to make it seem as if, you know, I don't, I don't have consideration for this individual and that I can't understand how these things can happen. But again, in not wanting to set precedent, I won't be supporting.
Councilmember Jackson, then councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. Just quickly, I want to say that I will, this is the only one I've looked at so far, being on General Services this year for the first time. But I do plan on and did look on it on a case-by-case basis, and in this case, with the, I would say discretion afforded, not so much as that we are appellate, but not that like a real court where we have written precedent that we are supposed to follow that type of way. I don't quite equate our committee with that type of precedent. So just looking on it case-by-case, I'm voting the way I am.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do appreciate also what you said, and I agree. I mean, as Chair of General Services and serving with councilmember Hussein, you know, it's tough. And I have, you know, I was pretty, you know, straightforward in looking at what the regulations say, what the ordinance says, whether it has done proper notice, because I know that our people are hardworking and our code enforcement is hardworking. This one, you know, I look at this and, you know, the language difficulty is clear, and I appreciate that we're going to be working with Refugee Services in the future to try to get some information out. But I still have a concern with, you know, I've seen some, some pretty significant issues with trash and with yard collection. Looking at those pictures, you know, her yard was spotless. It's not like she is a repeat offender, and if she is, please, please, please tell me. But looking at her yard, looking at it was spotless, I see that the couch was moved back, you know, to her garage. You know, our code enforcement people, again, work hard, but it just seemed like a knock on the door to tell her, her chair, and explain to her that it wasn't enough, you know, should have been, should have been done. So I'm going to, I'm going to continue with my amendment, but I do, I do respect what you said, President Wood, and also what you said, councilmember Hussein. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to amend the resolution that would grant the claim of five hundred and eighteen dollars. All those in favor, say aye. We have three. All those opposed, aye. We have three. So we have the original motion before us, and that is to deny the claim for four hundred and forty dollars. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Can I, roll call, can we do a roll call vote, please? I just did. We are voting on the original resolution before us, which is to grant, is to deny the claim for four hundred and forty dollars, which means they were granted the seventy-eight. Okay, so we have a roll call.
On adoption of the resolution...
Can I ask a question? So if this fails, then she is ordered to pay the entire five eighteen?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
On adoption of the resolution, councilmember Dunbar, councilmember Garza, councilmember Jackson, councilmember Hussein, councilmember Spitzley, councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the resolution is adopted.
And what we will do is, a letter is sent to her, and as I explained to her nephew, we will make sure that she has afforded the information about making payments on that as well. You're welcome. That takes us to public safety. And councilmember Hussein.
We have orders to make, save, or demolish two different properties. We'll take the first one up. Twenty-five hundred West Jolly Road, this particular property was red-tagged, sorry, red-tagged on December fifth, two thousand and seventeen. It was entered into the make, save, or demolish process on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. At this point, this property has been vacant for more than a hundred and eighty days, and the repairs, which are estimated at seventy-nine thousand, do exceed the state equalized value of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. The demo board did have a show cause hearing last year, August twenty-third of two thousand and eighteen. We reviewed this in public safety on December nineteenth of last year, and then the council, the city council, held a show cause hearing on January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Throughout that process, the property owner did not show up to any of the hearings. With that being said, no permits have been pulled up to date, and this would be a sixty-day make, save, or demolish. With that being said, I would move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, posed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
All right, we have another make, save, or demolish order. This is for fourteen fourteen Ballard Street. This property was red-tagged on July twelfth of two thousand and eighteen, and was entered into the make, save, or demolish process the next day due to the condition of the property. This structure has been vacant for a hundred and eighty days. The repairs at seventy-two thousand dollars do exceed the state equalized value of twenty thousand dollars. Demo board took a look at this August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. We reviewed it in public safety on December nineteenth of last year, and there was a public hearing before, or I should say, a show cause hearing before City Council on January fourteenth. To date, no permits have been pulled. We have not had any communication with the property owner. The property owner did not show up to any of the processes, whether that be the demo board, the public safety process, or the city council process. This would be a sixty-day, as this is not a fire-damaged structure. And with that being said, I'd move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, posed, same sign.
Okay, we are to the Committee on Public Services. Okay, we are to the Committee on Ways, Committee on Public Services.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. So the next agenda item includes fee changes for the Todd Martin Youth Leadership Tennis. So the Park and Recs Director, Brett Konchinsky, explained to the committee, he was proposing these changes now instead of waiting on the budget, because it is a summer program and they want the new fees when the summer program begins. The leadership program includes tutoring programs, a summer program, and a Friday night at MSU. So just so you know, fee changes, they haven't increased in several years, but the cost keeps continuing to rise, so they're making appropriate actions to that. So with this, I'd make a motion to move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? I'm going to, since Councilmember Garza, that you talked about the scholarships that are available for those that cannot afford the fee increases that were part of that, that we have in our programs.
No, we didn't, actually. Not that I'm aware of.
Ms. Harkins.
Madam President, you are correct. We do have scholarships available, and if participants have trouble affording the camp, we do have scholarships for those, so that is part of the program.
Okay.
All right, thank you. With that, we have a motion on the fee increases. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Councilmember Garza.
Okay, the next agenda item has to do with the elimination of restriction on different fees for nonresidents at Grossebeck Golf Course. So the resolution would be conveying the property back to the state for $1 to eliminate an earlier restriction in the sale to the city, which prohibited charging different rates for residents and nonresidents. The state asked for this resolution to remove this restriction. So with that, I'll move the resolution.
Okay, this is also a six-vote item. Are there any questions or concerns on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously.
We are to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Spitzley. We are at Item B.
7B. Thank you, Madam President. This is a motion for hiring outside legal counsel, Michael T. Small of Harvey Cruz PC. The city attorney comes to us from time to time to add folks on a list of outside counsel that they can draw from. This law firm has, in my, from my understanding, a particular set of skills in municipal law, if I'm not mistaken?
This is a request from our insurance carrier in connection with the damage claim being paid and claims and subclaims by the contractors that indemnify the city. And this is the firm that the insurance counsel has requested that we authorize for them to utilize in connection with those claims.
Thank you. I didn't know how much I could go into detail, because we talked about it in closed session, so I didn't know. So with that, and with that explanation by our city attorney, I move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. We're now to Item D.
Thank you, Madam President. And so this goes in part along with the sale of the Townsend Street parking ramp. However, this is for the sale, the authorization of, sale through the TIFA, through the TIFA Act. I have my notes here, and I apologize. So go right ahead.
You want me to do it?
You do it.
Mr. City Attorney.
These properties, parking ramps were, you're on Item D, right?
Yep.
The parking ramps were pledged or put into an agreement with the Tax Increment Finance Authority that allowed for the capture of certain state taxes. And through this, Townsend was one of the ramps, and there's a provision in the agreement with TIFA that collateral can be substituted. And that's what's happening here. There are two ramps that are being substituted in the resolution.
That's right.
For the Townsend ramp. So this is an amendment, authorizing an amendment to the lease with the Tax Increment Finance Authority to allow for the substitution of ramps that are equal or greater value than the Townsend ramp.
With that, I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. And if, for some reason, this, the sale were to fail, this is still a process that is fine?
It's still a process that is fine, even if the sale were, but I doubt if amendments would be signed at that point.
Right. Okay, thank you. All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. We're now to E. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a resolution, and I'll just read the resolution, where is a certain quitclaim deed dated January 9, 2019, has been presented to the city conveying property known as the Townsend Parking Ramp by the City of Lansing. And so this resolution will allow us then to accept the deed from the Lansing Building Authority. And with that, I move the resolution.
Here we have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. We are to F.
Thank you, Madam President. This one is a resolution regarding the issuance and sale of wet weather control programs state revolving fund obligation bonds. We had Alec Melvidas from Public Services here talking about the continued work that the City of Lansing is doing to address wet weather concerns. And so this allows us then to continue to do our work with the issuance and sale of bonds through the state revolving fund project obligation bonds. And with that, unless there's anything else that anyone needs to add, I'll move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
We are, we actually need to continue on with Committee of the Whole for more six-vote items, Miller Road Center.
All right, we are now to the Miller Road. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the resolution for action for the sale of the city property for the Miller Road Center on 6025 Curry Lane to the Capital Area Soccer League. You know, we've had a number of discussions and public hearings on this. You know, the Capital Area Soccer League, Scott Dane, has done a wonderful job. He's worked with Peppermint Creek, the theater group who is currently, or was currently occupying the building. It's to be noted that this did go out for a bid, you know, and Mr. Dane's group was the winning bidder. He has worked with Peppermint Creek. He has allowed them to continue with their theater season. And so, you know, and I really applaud that. I really applaud you working with them. I'm excited about this, the Capital Area Soccer League and all you're going to be doing for the City of Lansing. And with that, I move the resolution.
I have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a resolution to accept a donation in the amount of $200,000 from the June Knottsman-Françis Park Fund. She, the June Knottsman-Françis Park Fund will be used to make improvements to the City of Lansing's Francis Park Rose Garden and the Overlook. A little bit about Ms. Knottsman is that she was a big MSU fan, and she also went through the Master Gardener Program. She was a longtime resident of the area. And, you know, one of the things that she really wanted the funding for was the improvement of Francis Park, the improvement of the rose gardens. With the acceptance of this donation, the improvements will commence in spring of 2019 and finish that same year. It will not disrupt current park activities. Let's see. The, you know, the agreement between the Living Trust and the Parks Board, they met together, they met with the neighborhood and decide, you know, talked about what they would like to see and what they would like this money used for. And so they got together and they put together the agreement that it is going to be used for the rose gardens and overlook. And so with that, I would like to move the resolution to accept the amount of $200,000 from the June Knottsman Living Trust.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. The Committee on Public Safety introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend Chapter 1460, Sections 1460.01 and 1460.02 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances to adopt the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code with certain additions, deletions, and alterations. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Public Safety.
Councilmember Hussein.
So we had our lead housing inspector, Scott Sanford, sorry, in today as part of our Committee of the Whole. And he noted some of the notable changes between 2009 and the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. We've actually been under the 2009 IPMC since, I think, 2011. In any event, he discussed that the reference section has been expanded, 102.3 references. Now, it actually references existing building code, energy code, and fire code, as they apply to the state of Michigan. He also discussed that in the, under the 2019 IPMC, that they were only required to authorize, or I should say, only authorized, to contact the owner when violations occurred of the building code. The 2015 IPMC now authorizes them to contact the authorized agent as well. There's a new expansion in the code to add fire protection on multi-tenant buildings, which includes signage, the clarification exemption for smoke detectors, details on the install near cooking elements, bathrooms, et cetera. He also discussed that the motor vehicle portion is not used because the city utilizes the state of Michigan motor vehicle code. And so, again, we actually started vetting this in Public Safety, I think, back in maybe October of last year. So we've had a lot of conversation regarding this. And again, this is, what we're looking to do is set a public hearing for February 25, so folks can come down and speak on this issue. So with that being said, I would move the resolution to set the public hearing for February 25.
We have, excuse me, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Okay, we are to ordinances for passage. We have from the Committee on Development and Planning, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z6 2018 522 Lesher Place rezoning from DM3 Residential District to D1 Professional Office District is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so the applicant for this rezone is the NeoGen Corporation. They own a number of other properties in the area that they actually use for office space. This particular property they own currently, it is a registered rental. They use that for visiting scientists, international guests, things of that nature. What they're looking to do is to supplement their office space in the area. So they have some overflow space at this particular property, and so they would like to comply with zoning code. And we did ask the question in terms of this being, or I should say, continuing as a registered rental and being used for residential use, did they have that right under DM1 professional, or D1 Professional Office? And our zoning administrator said that absolutely they do. They don't need a special land use or anything of that nature. Due to the surrounding DM1 office, this is not a spot zone. We were also able to determine this is not conflict with the master plan in any way. So with that being said, I would move the rezone for, sorry, 522 Lesher Place.
We have a motion, and that is a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Next, we have another from the Committee on Development and Planning. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the Code of Ordinances. Z7 2018, two vacant lots at the northwest corner of West Cavanaugh Road and Lowcroft Avenue, rezoning from A Residential District to C Residential District. The ordinance is read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so the applicant in this case is Andrew Pauli. What he's looking, these are vacant parcels. So what he's looking to do, if successful with his rezoning, is actually combine the parcels and build one duplex. The questions before the committee were whether or not this was a spot zone. There are a number of duplexes in the area, a number of parcels that are Zone C residential. So the answer there, obviously, was no. Whether or not this conflicted with the master plan, the answer was no. And then there were some additional questions that we vetted through the development and planning process, as well as the public hearing process before this body. One was whether or not this particular applicant owned any of the properties in the area, because some of the duplexes are dilapidated and things of that nature. And our zoning administrator, zoning administrator, Susan Statuick, sorry, was able to vet those questions and determine that Mr. Pauli and his brother, who are actually business partners, do not own any of those duplexes. The second question, I believe, came from Councilwoman Spitzley, and that was whether or not we had any, if there were other past practices that we could point to with regards to the Paulis to make determinations on whether or not they are essentially reputable property owners and landlords in the City of Lansing. These actually are their only two properties in the City of Lansing, the residence of East Lansing. So we have no prior practices essentially to point to. There was, again, a public process in development and planning. We had our public hearing before this body. We did not receive any negative commentary, nor did we receive any supportive commentary. With that being said, I would move the rezone for the two vacant lots at the northwest corner of West Cavanaugh Road and Lowcroft Avenue.
We have a motion before us. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And we now have an ordinance for passage by the Committee on Public Safety, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter 1610 Uniform Fire Codes and Uniform Fire Code Standards. The ordinance is read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee on Public Safety and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Hussein.
All right, we spoke at length about this prior to the public hearing, so I will not reiterate. I will just say that all public comment to date, emails, correspondence, correct me if I'm wrong, have been positive on this item. So with that being said, I would move the adoption of Chapter 39 of the 2018 IFC, International Fire Code.
I have a motion before us, and this roll call vote. Mr. Clerk.
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Dunbar, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
And Councilmember Hussein, you're asking for immediate effect?
I would move for immediate effect.
We have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Okay, that completes our action items. So we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sign-in sheet in the back. We'll be collecting that in about, in just a few seconds, so if you want to speak, you do need to sign in. And we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Madam President.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk.
We have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards, commissions, and authorities.
Placed on file.
Tri-county Regional Plan and Commission Audit for Fiscal Year 2018.
To the Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Mayoral Executive Order 2019-01, Rotary Park renaming Parkland.
Committee of the Whole.
Mayoral Executive Order 2019-02, adopting the 2018 City of Lansing Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
Mayoral Executive Order 2019-03, Lansing, Mayor's, Lansing Veterans Mayoral Executive Order 2019-03, Lansing Mayor's, Lansing Veterans Commission.
Committee of Whole.
General Fund Stats Report Fiscal Year 2019, Second Quarter.
Committee of the Whole and Internal Auditor.
Lansing Housing Commission Final Report with Supplemental Information, June 30th, 2018.
Committee of the Whole and Internal Auditor as well.
We have letters from mayor regarding Act 4, 2019, Townsend Parking Ramp.
And that would be Committee of the Whole.
Appointment of Shaquilla Myers to the Capital Area Transit Authority.
Intergovernmental Relations.
Z9, 2018.
That would be Development and Planning Committee.
Z8, 2018, 5400 South Cedar.
Development and Planning Committee.
Issuance and Sale of Wet Weather Control Program.
Committee of the Whole and placed on file.
SLU 2, 2018, at 1609 North Larch Street.
That would go to Development and Planning.
Grant Acceptance, the Burn Justice Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Act 10, 2018, Development Sewerism.
That would go to Public Service and Internal Auditor.
Grant Acceptance, Michigan Office of Highway Safety Planning.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Grant Acceptance, Burn Justice Assistance Grants for, Grant for Technology.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Carryforwards.
Committee of the Whole and Internal Auditor.
Reappointment of Benjamin Backen to the LDFA.
That would go to Development and Planning.
The appointment of Enrique Mendoza.
That would be Committee of Whole and placed on file.
Act 1, 2019.
Development and Planning.
Orders to Make, Safe, or Demolish, 3815 Marion.
Public Safety.
Orders to Make, Safe, or Demolish, 4704 Hughes.
Public Safety.
Orders to Make, Safe, or Demolish, 434 South Francis.
Public Safety.
Ten-year recycling agreement with Mtera Environmental.
Committee of the Whole and Internal Auditor.
Revoke the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for Spartan Internet Properties.
Development and Planning.
The appointment of TJ Buchholz as a member of the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
General Services.
Appointment of Stephen Purchase to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Public Safety Committee.
Reappointment of Kenneth Saltzman to the Income Tax Board of Review.
Ways and Means.
Appointment of Gary Mans to the Planning Board.
Development and Planning.
Communications and Petitions, an affidavit of disclosure, Darren Dykens, Lansing Police Department.
The Ethics Board.
Communication from Jack Alexander regarding a request for financial investment to improve Cooley Law School Stadium.
To the mayor's office and to Committee of the Whole Budget Process.
Claim Appeal, Vonda Gilliam for trash fees on Furly Street.
General Services.
And Claim Appeal, Craig Skinner for trash fees on West Hillsdale.
General Services.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Do we have a motion for Councilmember Spitzley?
So, move, I move for excused absences for Councilmember Washington and Councilmember Spatafor.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, same sign.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Are there any comments by council members? Seeing none? Is there any comments from the mayor's office? Final comments? There are none there? Okay.
Okay, we are to public comments on government, city government-related matters. We have Bob Peña and Donald Horton.
Good evening.
I reside at 2100 Vine Street. I have been a resident of Lansing for 34 years. I address the council members tonight, and, well, I hope to have Mayor Shore too, but he's already left. I am proud of you guys and what you do and the things that you have done and continue to do for the City of Lansing. During this last polar vortex, I was in front of my house shoveling snow when the plows went by, and I was filled with admiration for my city workers and had respect for my city workers for all they do for us, including you guys. They are the people that make Lansing sing for joy. It was kind of tough, shoveling in the snow, but when the plows came by, it was like superheroes that come to save the day. I remember smiling and waving at the snowplows. I know it took a couple of days, they had to do the main thoroughfares first, but we appreciated that. It was a heartfelt emotion when they came by, and there is a great gratitude of thanks for the snowplow drivers battling the extreme cold and the extreme temperatures that we in Lansing had to deal with in that polar vortex. I wish to extend thanks to, once again, not just the snowplow drivers, but all the people that was covered today in the last two hours that take care of public safety issues for us. And in behalf of what the snowplowers, snowplow drivers did, cleaning out our drives so that we could get in and out of our homes and in and out of our driveways. On behalf of the citizens of Lansing, and especially the east side of Lansing, we want to thank you for your leadership and for all of the Lansing staffers for what they do. From one loyal and passionate resident to the council and to the mayor, thank you. And it is our wish to award an honorary snowflake shirt to the mayor, and I am proud to be a resident of this great city. May you just appreciate our gratitude. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thank you. And Ms. Harkin, I think you're here to accept on behalf of the mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Harkin.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hopefully, that doesn't bring more snow, so...
Yeah, I think it will tonight. Next, we have Donald Horton.
I keep on changing and wanting to remind myself to say something, and I was, this last presentation reminded me to thank the city of council, especially you, Councilwoman Wood, speaking over the vortex and the bad weather that we had and the constant updates that your office provided and to the residents. It was really helpful to know exactly what was going on, what areas of the town were being plowed, the schedules and everything else. I think the city did an absolutely outstanding job of dealing with this really harsh weather The other thing was with regard to Pueblos, I'm really in favor of that. I have some concerns with regard to parking, but in that entire real district, that is becoming, that is a big issue. But I just have a little concerns, but I also noted that in the plan that he has provided for parking with the space that he has. With regard to the presentation with, I'm just going to say with the chair, I think it was item number 1632. I'm a little bit concerned about this because these are refugee people who might not have an understanding of the different ordinances, the ordinances, and how to go about complying with those ordinances, or in the first place, when they put the chair out there in the street, whether or not they understood they were violating the rule, the law or not. My concern is, is that I'm, being in a neighborhood that I am in, we have a lot of refugees who live in our neighborhood, and quite often, they do not, they don't comprehend what you're talking about, they don't understand what the violation is and what it is that they have to do in order to comply with the city code. So, I would hope that the city begins to develop some kind of a plan in light of the fact that a lot of refugees are coming to Lansing to deal maybe with refugee services, okay, and to have some kind of a protocol where, when these violations are issued to people, that there is a way for the city to find out whether or not this is a refugee situation or not, and then to deal with refugee services so that maybe they can get back with those, these folks and deal with them. And other than that, I mean, I do understand the situation, so I don't want you to think that I don't understand, you know, the compliance issues that you have to deal with on an everyday basis. I've seen several of the issues that have been presented here to the city council that had to be dealt with, okay, and the fines went ahead. But this particular issue kind of touched me as well, and I just think that we need to kind of deal with the issue with refugees coming into Lansing as well as making sure they understand and can comprehend the rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Are there any other, that's it? That's our last?
That's it.
All right, and with that, we are adjourned.